Want me to sit in front of you?
All right, so does anybody want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we fill our positions on the board and I nominate Kristen as Chair again. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'd also like to make Steph Rice Chair again.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion that the Board appoint Mark Kennedy as an alternate. We have two alternates presently, and we can have up to five. And Mark's been engaged with plenty more activities for a number of years and expressed an interest to continue, so that's my motion. And I'll make a motion that Kate join us this evening.
Let's finish that. So all in favor for Mark?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'll make a motion that Kate be representative or as an alternate this evening.
There's one here too. Nobody wants to sit next to one?
All right, we have one site review application this evening for Greg Lambert and Sons' property on Route 125. And they have asked for continuation to April 4th.
I'll make a motion, we do continue the Lambert and Sons hearing until the 4th of April.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that is the end of our official hearings tonight. Do you want to welcome Doug to you? Sorry, just get right over there. I think everybody's met him.
Why don't we just go around the table and introduce ourselves?
I'm Steph Kisa. I've been on the Board since 2021. I don't know how deep or my background's in civil engineering. Yeah, excited to be here.
She's Vice Chair.
We met at Rose Stevens. Been on the Board for a while.
A while.
We put a note in that.
Yeah, you sure changed me by a decade.
What?
But sorry, it's close enough. What's one decade plus or minus?
I think I got that in, so. I'm Kristen.
Jillian?
Lottie?
Doug?
Kate? I'm an alternate.
And Mark? And Bruce is not here. I mean, Brian.
Ned.
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 Both of those people.
Okay, we have 324 Route 25 Hobby Tracks. It looks like there's some activity there and then you ask for the scoop, and we've got a letter back. And what is this property currently, what's the site plan for?
The site plan is for woodwork and, no, woodlaving and lumberyard that have a retail operation through the lumberyard. We also approved it for roll-off dumpster structures. And we approved it for a landscaping operation that was there for several years. Those are the only uses that have ever been approved there. This is an odd thought what they're doing here. Doesn't really directly fit any of those things.
Yeah, or anything else, really. I mean, it's a, like, if you looked at the list of things, that, you know, it's kind of unique.
It is. It is.
So, do you have a recommendation?
Well, with talking with Francesco and giving us this letter, it's very low impact. And, you know, really, his prognostication was that they're just not going to last there because it's just, the guy isn't even really sure what he wants to do. He doesn't have much experience in there. And this is a really weird thing. I mean, how many people really want to go someplace to drive their remote control vehicles?
I don't know.
Maybe competition. It was a big deal 20 years ago.
Are there any, like, safety issues with having people?
These are just battery powered.
No, I mean, having people on the site.
There's a lot of space on the lower section. There's a lot of space.
Did you say how long this track is?
I don't know. You did not indicate that here.
So this has to be done through an addendum. If you can come up with a definition of what we would be approving, some sort of recreational?
Retail activity. We originally thought it was a craft store that he was working.
Yeah, because we have, like, amusement activities, like?
Well, the zone specifically allows commercial recreation. That's one of the defined things in the zoning ordinance. For some odd reason, I don't think I've ever seen that in another zoning ordinance.
What did it say yet?
It's called commercial recreation.
Oh, really? Well, I guess that's what he would be. It's obviously a business enterprise, maybe a small scale, but I guess you'd have to define it if you're going to give him an addendum. I mean, I think that they'd want some sort of addendum.
Yes, and we would have to, we would work off this estimate of business activity.
So it wouldn't show on a plan, or we'd just take a plan, even though we wouldn't require that to be a recordable plan, designate where on the property this activity is?
We could ask him to do that, certainly, just by getting a copy of the existing site plan.
I can't imagine him bothering to be concerned to neighbors, but just to know where it was, so it wasn't against the property.
And so they understand what the sign means. All of a sudden.
Anybody have questions or discussions?
Mark?
Mark?
It would be similar to the size and scope of what happens in Peterson's Field, with the RC club that runs there.
Is that informed?
I'm unaware of the RC club that runs there.
Yeah, I'm uninformed. Could you inform me where Peterson's Field is?
Maybe I should be more specific on the location. Where they hold snowmobile drags? That'd be Phil Peterson's farm.
Let's pretend that I haven't lived here my whole life.
I'm sorry?
I haven't lived here my whole life, so I don't know.
You don't know where they hold the snowmobile drags?
I don't.
So if you go down, just follow the mass of traffic that you get. If you go down the western side of North Road towards Fremont, there's a road on the right-hand side, Martin Road, and you've got fields on either side of you to get to the old farmhouse. Well, they have an RC club that flies planes, little RC planes, you know, remote control planes, that gather there in the summer. So I'm guessing that this would be the same scope as what they do.
But cars.
But cars.
It's a little less dangerous when you fall out of the air.
Yeah, it shows up as Fremont Flyers RC Club on Google Maps.
But it sounds like that's an event, like where a lot of people?
They're there almost every weekend in the summer.
Are they by remote control?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, you can stop and watch them. They're kind of cool. Yes, but it's not like a mass gathering. You know what I mean? Maybe, maybe a type, a dozen cars.
You might have seen one go over, she thought it was an Iranian drone, possibly. But, no, it's very site-specific. They don't go very far. I mean, they fly around maybe by a.
Yeah, they have a landing strip.
This is cars, though, right?
This is cars, yes.
So, yeah, my just question was, if it's different, I have a problem just passing something that's totally different from the site plans, right?
Well, that's what we're talking about, is what we would require them to do.
To do something different and then you would reassess. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's only, I hate the precedent of, oh, you know, you were going to have water, but now you're having remote-controlled cars.
Yeah, we need to be equitable and keep it running.
My experience with remote controlled cars is that a track that's, looks like a figure eight or something like that inside a building.
Let's say inside and outside.
Yeah, I see that, but, you know, those cars are bad.
But just acknowledging the fact that whatever we approve goes not only with that applicant, but that suddenly see somebody else in the future. So if we knew where on the property it was, we could assure that in terms of neighborhood compatibility, it works.
Yeah, I thought that was a good point.
And maybe, you know, they aren't sitting quite loud. If you live right next to, you know, some hours.
Fire safety and fuel. So you'll go back and ask them to?
I will. I will. I will send an email with these concerns.
And then if it's hard to conceptualize, we could go for a visit?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that'd be great. I'd like to see the size, what we're talking about.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, next item. You received a copy of the Land Use Regulation Audit Draft.
In your email.
Your email.
Now, you're using our email, our town emails now, is that correct?
I'm trying to, except for a couple of people that don't use them.
Because I didn't open it today, and I guess that's where it was.
Oh, I apologize.
Well, no, that's fine. Now I know where it is. Nick Braden is getting me all set up.
When I get reply, it like defaults to my other emails, and then I.
Sometimes I just email both of your email addresses. Do you want a hard copy for tonight?
If you're, that sure is, go ahead.
Nope.
So that email that you sent out, is it the one that I responded to?
I believe so.
Okay.
It might have been. Do they have this in it?
I don't recall.
So there's, so there's a lot of good information in here. Keep in mind, it's preliminary, and it does not have the survey data in here yet, so you'll see a lot of places where it says, how she worded it, public, yeah, public perception, and it's blank until, we'll talk about the survey in a second. So I think what would be good between now and the next meeting is for everybody to read this carefully, flag anything that you think is incorrect, or you have questions about, or you have concerns about, and then start thinking about next steps. And I'll ask her how quickly she can get the survey part incorporated, and then maybe we can have her back to walk through this with us. Are there more?
Yes, I have to talk, because I met with Jen yesterday.
Okay, yeah, of course.
So I'll give an update on that. We've come up with some tentative dates for her, is it so?
Okay, perfect. All right, do you have an update from the conversation with her?
About this specifically? No.
So you're working with her on this report?
Well, I'm working with the RPC on all the things that we're doing.
Oh, right, and one of you authored some of this?
No, no.
Keep in mind that we have to finish everything for the grant by the end of June.
Yeah, she'd like, their real end date is July, but she really, from our, from our perspective, she wants us to think it's June.
Okay.
Because they need time to close things out. It's not something that happens real quickly, so June is the date that they'd like to be done with us.
Okay, so I think, so I think that.
Done with this phase.
Yes, yes, okay. So let's think of April as kind of like a work month on this for us to get through a lot and try to give her a lot of feedback so that she can?
That would be great, because.
Move to another iteration.
Yeah, yeah, because she, yes.
Okay. Any questions on that? So the survey, as of Monday, we had 180 responses. Did you post the final call, last call?
Yes, it was posted on the town.
On the town website. Did it say tomorrow was the last day?
Right, for a second.
So it'll close tomorrow, and then RPC will analyze all that data for us and put information in here. I think there's like a thumbs up, thumbs down to for public opinion. I have read the comments. I think we're going to have some work to do around misinformation and statements that are made that are not, it's, it's almost like internally inconsistent information. So we might want to do an FAQ or a miss some facts or something around that. And then I think as part of our grant, we'll have a, we also have a second public meeting. And, yeah, there's, there's a lot of negativity in there, which you probably gathered.
Oh, yeah? Did you read the comments, Mark?
But I am going to request that I see all the data.
Yeah.
What I don't want happening is, I'm not, I just would like to be.
You want to see?
I want to see it all. I don't want to leave it to someone else to decipher that data. I think as an alternate or a member of this Board, we have the right to consume all the data.
Yeah, I think we should be as transparent as possible. And when she's analyzing it, or when we get a draft, if we want to ask, could you look at it this way? Could you just show us this group, or just this question, or whatever, we could ask her to, just, you know, do a little bit more analysis.
I think an outreach about that data would be the wisest thing to do.
We could do kind of an in-depth presentation. We can only ask RPC to do so much, but we could do that ourselves. I only half jokingly said to Jillian that I almost feel like we need a course on compassion in the community, or some kind of workshop around that, because there's a lot of, we don't want these people, or, you know, these people cause these problems, or not a lot of being able to, not a lot of empathy, or being able to put yourself in other people's shoes. That's kind of a separate issue of, you know, the technical things that we'll deal with, but just as a community member more than anything else, I think that struck me. Did you have?
I mean, honestly, if you look at any online forum, you will walk away with the understanding that we're not a very civil society anymore. So I'm not, I mean.
But we can work on it locally.
The planning board can't do anything about that, and I guess the town could have some sort of compassion training. But the people that will come to that, not the people that are writing those comments.
You're going to be running out of time on the rail.
I mean, they just aren't. People are very, people are very comfortable in their anonymity. And they're not going to camp. And I don't need to be cynical. I love people, and I like nice people, more than I like nasty people. But I deal with all of them, and I don't presume I can change them, because you can't change them.
So maybe through some information, education, some facts, we can.
Information regarding what they're saying. Because we have the same thing when we had a workforce housing ordinance. We had one of the most vicious public hearings I've ever sat at. And it was only because of two people, but those two people said horrifying things. And they were completely misguided and incorrect, but they still said them.
The same thing happened with an over 55, that people said horrible things that just weren't factually true.
There's a lot in there about that housing. I think that one of the challenges for us is going to be, there's a little bit of, why are you doing this? What, you know, why are you defining goals? Don't tell us what to do while we're asking them what they want. They want, and just stop everything. Don't do anything, don't let anybody do anything. And so I think there's some education around, we don't have that power.
Why we need to?
We can't lock the doors. We don't own the land, so, yeah, we'll have, we'll have some educational things to do.
There's nothing wrong with that. I think that's.
Yeah, and through that, maybe we can just, you know.
I'm not getting the tint of rose glass when I look at you, but I think that you're wearing it.
So from a process standpoint, RPC is going to be done with us? I mean, that's, that's their, that's the contract that we signed. Will end for them as far as their interaction with the town in first of July, basically.
Correct, but in my discussion with Jen yesterday, she told me that there, there has been funding for that, for the second round, for them, for there to be money for them to help us actually develop. Regulations, right, or ordinances.
What gift do you apply for that?
We do have to apply for it. It's still free. I mean, it doesn't cost us anything.
How do we go about getting that done then?
But it would, well, it hasn't, I think it only became official the end of last week, so there isn't an application process yet, but it's kind of nearer this one, so they'll do it within the next month or so.
So you'll keep on top of that?
Yeah, yeah, and general inform us about that.
And that was bigger too. I think it was like 100.
Yeah, it was, because there was more stuff that we would do.
Because this is maybe 50% of the process, but the rest of it, implementation is the big.
Okay. Anything else on that?
So would she come to the Board or come to a public hearing and discuss some of this, or?
We have, that's part of the grant. We have one more public hearing. So, but I think we're, we're going to have to, what, why are you laughing?
Well, because I do, I have dates I want to talk with the Board about.
But we'll also probably have to do more ourselves. Yes, dates?
Yes, because when Jen and I spoke yesterday, she would like to come to the Board. And here's a, here's a couple of questions for us. She'd like to come twice. She'd like to come first on May 16. If you're not available on May 16? Because she could only come if we were willing to start the meeting at 6:00.
Wouldn't it be bad?
Because this will put everything off two weeks, because then she, at that meeting, she wanted to go over the draft documents, master plan chapter for housing and that evaluation, so that then there could be a public hearing on the master plan chapter on June 6. So if we don't do the May 16, then we go June 6 and June 14.
And she can't do like April 20, because it's April 18, which is a lot sooner, or May 2, January 2.
Well, because the, because the first one is, everything is draft still, let me talk with her about that, okay? And I'll, I'll send her an email tomorrow.
Okay, so May 2, we're doing a joint thing with the Conservation Commission. But if 6:00 works better for her, we could basically have a work session at 6:00, and then?
The only time she'd have to come in early was on the 16th, because she had a meeting in East Kingston at 7:00. So if we.
I mean, I don't have to be here, but I'd like to be here.
No, you've been really involved in all of this. Are you, are you available for the April 18, maybe?
I believe so, yes.
So let me, let me throw those out there, okay, both April 18 and the May, the first meeting in May, and see if either of those stick with her.
Okay.
All right?
Did those work for everybody generally?
That's fine. When are you back?
I want to say on live television. I'll tell you later. It's going to be recorded. The whole world's in here, but I'm doing it.
Well, I'm just thinking, could we do a special meeting?
We could do a special meeting, like, on the 23rd.
That's what I was wanting.
Yeah.
So that could be another option date? When? No?
But that's not, then one, bringing one in here for another day.
That does work. Okay, sorry. And I hate to say that, because I don't ever want it to be about me, but I do have contracts.
Understandable. Okay, all right. Okay, anything else on that?
No, those were the, those were the two things I wanted to touch base with her, so I'll get back with her about this.
And did, did we have a, we haven't had a hearing yet on transportation and vision chapters? Have we seen a final?
I think we saw, we saw a very final draft of the transportation.
Very close.
Yeah, yeah.
I can check in on this.
Okay, yeah.
I'll put that in my email, actually.
Okay, yeah, we'll get them all.
Yeah, because there's no reason why we can't use that date that she's talking about, the master plan, public hearing for the housing, to just include all three.
Okay, yeah, would be great. We can get a lot done before.
Yeah, that would, that would close it up for her. That would be good.
Perfect. Okay, I'll jump to, I'll just, let me have that left. Word procedures. All I wanted to say was, it was, so you know, the last meeting I was on? Zoom. It was very difficult to hear. You guys are so quiet tonight, but sometimes we're very animated. So we're just going to have to be a little better about not talking over each other, interrupting, and, and, you know, I'll have to be better about calling on people in the audience and just making that a little, trying to strike a balance here between my informality and like the really formal meetings. So I still want everybody to participate and have a public comment and everything, but we just have to be able to hear each other, so that's all I wanted to say about that. And we are hit the elections. Does anybody have anything else?
Yeah, I just, oh, go ahead, Doug. No, you first. I'm going to be a minute.
He's got, he's got a whole notebook over there.
I just reread this, this week, uh, it's a procedure that we adopted about a year ago, I believe. It's not mine, but you know, the front copy, or front page of the zoning book. But I just wanted to call everybody's attention to number five, and it says that at plenty more meetings, alternates, as fixed alternates, who are not activated to fill the seat of an absent or recused member or who have not been appointed by the Chair to temporarily fill the unoccupied term of a vacancy, may participate with the Board in a limited capacity. During public hearings, alternates may sit at the table with the regular members and may view documents, listen to testimony, and actively participate and interact with other Board members, the applicant, the butters, and the public. So if, and ask questions and have a discussion. However, they should not be allowed to second motions, because they're not an appointed member for that evening. And I think that's the way we always operated in this fashion, had all the alternates sitting at the table participating. And I think that about, you know, a year and a half ago, when we had this legal case before the town, it was very important that Board members, being alternates in this case, who were not participating, participating as voting members that, that evening, the attorney said, you know, they really should not be sitting at the table. People who recuse themselves for a reason should join the public. And that just kind of carried on, even though the court case was over, and we still have been operating the last number of months with having alternates just sit back in the audience or off to one side. So, where it's important that they are able to fill in for regular members when a regular member is absent, it's important that they understand and are knowledgeable about the cases that are ongoing. So I just think that we ought to go back to our, the way we did operate prior, where we try to open the table out, accommodate everybody who's either an alternate, in addition to permanent members.
What's that?
That was before my time.
When we did?
When everybody's at the table.
I don't think everybody's fit at the table, but, yeah.
That's a concern, but they could be up here.
I guess my concern was they were kind of ostracized in a way, or excommunicated in recent.
Yeah, having them sit in the audience, that doesn't.
If you're up here, they'd be past a plan or can stand up and look at a plan on the table.
As some of them has a hearing problem, it's better for me to sit closer.
Yeah, that's like a point.
What?
You don't have the best hearing either, and if you're not facing me, I can't hear you.
Yeah.
What she said, I, I think what she said was she had a hearing problem, but she wasn't facing me. So that's the difficulty when you have a table like this, like this, people out here really can't hear what you're saying.
We normally at least have it open, and I think we should always have it open. Okay. Um, okay, that's, that's good, um, anything else?
Just an update for last Wednesday's meeting on the RPC meeting, a couple of you already heard this, so I apologize for repeating myself. In attendance at the RPC meeting was Mark Kennedy, the new RPC member that we had there, and Doug Marino also sat in on the meeting. They're working on their master plan, the twenty-five year master plan, but then, and they'd like to have this done next year. And in doing so, they sort of are trying to steam, streamline their master plan, so it's more readable, easier to understand, more applicable to the region itself, and they also interjected that in doing so, they'd like it, like the towns to think about that as well, keeping it simple, easy to understand, and moving forward. But they broke, at this particular meeting, they broke down, I, I forget the terminology they used, but they did invite a younger point of view. I don't know if that's politically correct, and I apologize for the second time, but they invited UNH students, I had six or seven of them showed up, Doug was there, in that age demographic, representing a point of view as to what they thought, or what they think a twenty-five year plan should look like. Some things that came out of it, Mark participated, and he talked about ADUs, very important. We had Nicole, I believe her name was, sitting at the table with us, just on her last year, graduating from UNH. She thought that was very important, because cost of housing was so expensive, there's no place to go. More green space seemed to be, that was mentioned a couple of times, seemed to be a priority in the area, and larger community centers for accessibility, for people to participate at a lower price or free, like our REC Center, looking for growth and places to go without costing a fortune, because you can't go to concerts for less than, I guess if you go see a Taylor Swift concert.
Take out a loan.
Take out a loan, okay, but not to say that Taylor Swift wouldn't do it for less money here, but. So housing, that was a big issue, affordability, and transportation, I guess it's diminishing across the area as far as transportation from UNH to Portsmouth through Newmarket, and that seemed to be a real concern for the students, because not all of them have cars to get to places, and some of them wanted to participate at the RPC meeting and couldn't make it, because they had no transportation, and there used to be a mobile unit.
Is that coast operations in COASD?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, but that's what they were referring to, that they didn't have any accessibility to that. One of the most interesting points for me, and as a general consensus, after graduation on these students that spoke, and even Doug, I got this impression, you know, it, it, there's not a lot of opportunity within the state to hold people here, not that we can change that, but even still, the jobs that are available are low paying, so there's no attraction, once you have a degree, to stick around, and again, housing came up in that aspect. And, and they're feeling forced to, to move away and go to a city, you know, whether it's Boston and/or Somerville, Melrose, I don't know that Somerville was mentioned, but I'm just reflecting on my own daughter, couldn't keep her here. And, you know, she moved from here to Melrose and almost tripled her salary. So anyway, that's just an overview of what it was, they're gonna continue doing this, and next they're gonna do, I think, what did they say, Doug, thirty year olds, forty year olds, and fifty year olds, after that.
Why didn't we do a chance?
They didn't mention our age bracket.
Do we have to reveal our age? It could be slipping to different. Maybe that's, that's, that will be here in twenty-five years if they want it.
I think the point is, is that, you know, if you take a look at the RPC members that are there, and I think Mark could give us a good overview on this, but if you take a look at them, you know, they're sixty plus, sixty-five plus, seventy plus, and you're trying to ask that demographic to make a decision for somebody who's twenty years old, or trying to develop a plan for people that are twenty years old, so, or, or thirty years old, and so I think at the drop off point is maybe fifty years old in that age bracket, because once you're in your seventies, twenty-five years, if you're lucky, and by that time, I don't think you're, I don't know that you're lucky, but.
Modern medicine.
Right. You know, I don't want to be in that position, so anyway, that was the overview, Doug, anything to add?
Yeah, no, I, I think you covered it, and I also want to give Mark a chance to talk about, so I just want to thank you and Mark for welcoming me there, it was really informative, but yeah, the point about, you know, the importance of being able to retain people, I mean, even the young woman at our table, Nicole, you know, was unsure if she would be, you know, staying here post-graduation, this is somebody who's interested enough in civic activity in New Hampshire that she, you know, joined us for the meeting, so, definitely very, very impressive.
I think it's important to keep in mind that different demographics, and I'm glad that they're doing this, and I'm glad that it's a conversation. I'm sure, I had this conversation with my wife about this young lady, she reminded me of my wife, who loved New York City, who went to college in New York City, and then was like, I'm done with New York City, and then moved, you know, back to this region. So you have to keep in mind that your wants and your needs in your twenties is not, might not be your wants and needs when you're in your thirties, right? And in your forties, so I look forward to this continuing conversation. When she talked about green space, it wasn't just open space like woods where she could walk in, it was more of a community area, where you maybe had apartments, and then you had a nice green space, and people could gather in that green space, and then events could happen in that green space. I think that's where she was going with, with green spaces, as far as is it her living situation with that? But it'll be an interesting continual conversation of different demographics.
Kind of the old town center, center concept.
Correct, yeah, I mean, which is a grand idea, so I'm trying to pull that idea into my community, right? So the expansion of the VRC, I think that's a, a good way to bring a younger demographic. Now, as far as housing that demographic, that's gonna be a long-term conversation that we're gonna have to have here, and it's not an easy one, so I also look forward to that conversation.
Becky?
Couple of things to follow up on that, I think the town of Kingston did a long-term study on services for seniors. I think the library down there was the host, and they talked about everything from transportation to availability of services, health, shopping, all of those things, recreational, and it's a wonderful document, and what they're doing is wonderful, wonderful, it's very broad, I think it's still available there, but my thought is, these twenty, thirty, and forty year olds are gonna be sixty, seventy, and eighty, so whatever you do should anticipate, not only what they want now for the younger population, but they're gonna be the older population. So you're, gotta be community inclusive in how things. Second, I thought I received an email from RPC about a meeting in April?
Yeah, in February.
April, what's the date? Trying, and it has to do with community development, doesn't it?
Yes.
And I don't know if that's, that's on our general calendar?
No, it wouldn't be on our general calendar.
But it, you drive, okay, thank you.
But I did find that conversation extremely interesting, because there was an older woman there, and it was like, she kind of wanted the same things that she did, but just in a different way, you know, because we go through these different stages in life, and, and she wanted to be more inclusive with her community of older people, have community events in that green space for an older generation. So I found that interesting, how the wants and needs of a twenty-year-old were also kind of the wants and needs of a seventy-year-old, right?
We could do something like that here, if we can get people to come out and have those conversations.
I would, I would talk to the woman who runs the Kingston Library, they were in charge of that, it was really thorough.
I think we can also get assistance from, like, from extension, we have a person kind of assigned to us who's supposed to help us with public participation, he might be able to help us with it, there's other resources.
Of course, we have this available to us now too, so that might help, especially if there was a gathering from UNH, and there were more students that liked to participate, and it wouldn't necessarily have to just be them, it could be certain.
Are those meetings, those RPC meetings, videoed so that they could be linked, so people in Brown could watch, like, your meeting the way you had the other night?
I, I don't know, and I, I don't think it was.
It never worked, but.
They had Zoom options.
Yeah, they have Zoom options.
Yeah, and it's a public meeting.
Yeah, it's a public meeting, but it's, but no, I don't think they record it.
Does Zoom mean?
I don't think that would work well, because we broke down into smaller groups, so, and there were just conversations happening around the place. So I don't think even filming it, you'd be able to keep up with all the conversation.
Yeah.
What's the meeting in April?
April, the first week, I think.
I, I didn't put it in my book.
Is it the regular meeting, or is it like some other event?
No, I think it's another event.
I did, I do find these sessions fascinating, the conversations that take place, it gives you a different view of the world around you, and your own.
You could email Becky with that date.
Yeah, I'll double check.
I'm sure, how often do you really get to talk to a twenty-year-old young lady that you've never met about housing options, right?
I can bring my kids in.
Well, I'll have my daughter call you, John.
It's like the seventh.
Oh, John. Mark.
I missed that, um, I, I also signed up on April sixth, which is a Saturday, there's something called Saving Special Places, sponsored by, are you going?
That might be.
The one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, this is like, I think this is like an all-day thing.
It's something all of New Hampshire, I think.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm gonna go to that, can you send out the link, if I send it to you?
Yeah.
Um, it does cost money, but I don't know if we might have some money.
Is it through the Conservation Alliance?
Um, I think the receipt came from UNH, actually, yeah, it did. It's, yeah, it's in Walton High School. And it's a, you know, they have a keynote speaker, and they have some breakout sessions and stuff, so it's like a regular conference. Um, and I think there was one thing on, on housing, among other things. How did you hear about it? Uh, somebody from the Conservation Commission called me, random, yeah, randomly. That's good, um, we should all share more info and stuff. Um, you're closing your folder, are you ready?
No, I actually, speaking of sharing, we talked about at our last meeting, the Select Board and DOT meeting. It is not March twenty-sixth, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware.
I believe it's September?
I believe it's April sixteenth at the REC Center.
Okay. Everybody get that, April sixteenth, REC Center?
No need to storm the castle on Tuesday.
At the REC Center?
I believe so.
Do you know what time?
Regular Select Board time, I believe.
So that's the DOT one, right?
Yeah, it's not next week.
Select Board meeting, but DOT is gonna be either?
I believe so.
Is it on the website?
So that starts at six, then?
I'm looking, I believe so.
Six?
I believe so.
Okay.
April sixteenth, tax season will be over, maybe I can come. I think correct. Um, I was just gonna mention on the RPC master plan, I think the, like, first month I was on the board, I said, I'm gonna go through the master plan, it's like eight hundred pages, and I want to clean it up. Still want to do that, now that we have, we'll have three new chapters, and we have some, a couple pretty recent chapters, it's becoming a little more feasible, so I still think, maybe that's a good goal for me to finish up by the end of the year, because it's really hard to look at now, it's just a big old, it's a miniograph, it's a little like, yeah.
You could be active with them.
And a lot of outdated stuff.
If you have trouble falling asleep, right?
Yeah, exactly, Becky?
Talk about out of date, the conservation manual is nineteen ninety-five.
I was at your meeting.
Just to follow up, since this was discussed at your last planning board meeting, about a letter to Exeter regarding the grant application for the dam, a draft was created, possibly a joint letter, it was reviewed by the Select Board Tuesday, it's been tabled until next week, we're not considering the comment to the report, deadline was today, but as specifically from the town of Brentwood, as the next, following up their letter of November fifteenth, so that's still moving along. And Robert Stan did send out approximately letters to every butter along the river in Brentwood, and Exeter sent out thirty-five letters, similar protesting the lack of communication and the lack of transparency as the decision was made.
Did you bring a copy of the letter?
I didn't bring that folder today.
I forgot mine.
Yeah.
So I guess if anybody wants to, has a, something they want to say, go to Karen or the Select Board, if they have any questions or anything they'd like to incorporate.
Well, I just, I wrote one to myself, and they gave us at that meeting of the twenty-seventh of February, they gave us the email address where they take all the comments, so.
Today's the deadline.
Yeah, I did mine a couple days ago.
So if you have it, maybe I suppose.
I did, did you?
Please stop doing that.
Oh, you said.
Did you send your letter to the board selectman?
Well, I sent it to the appropriate, you know, they had an email file.
Just as an individual.
Yeah, it's a pickpocket.
Why don't you send that to the select people too, because maybe what you said is something that they would want to add to it.
Well, it would be the best thing you could, I guess I'll forward that on to, actually forward it to Chilean, I think.
I think you did.
I will do that if you decide you want to give it to Karen.
Well, I did, I sent out a message after the last meeting, and I said, if anybody had questions or things they want to clarify, let me know, I can funnel things, and I didn't hear it back from anybody, so, if you thought of anything since then.
Actually, on the subject of dams, I'll forward you the letter too, Becky, I, I wrote to the, the State Dam Bureau the other day, just to ask, you know, what, what's, what's transpired, a number of us went to a meeting back in twenty seventeen in Portsmouth, where it looked like they were going to cause some action to happen, the state was going through the Attorney General's office, and I did get a response back, I'll send that response to you.
Thank you, good fun, and Karen Clement was, on the request of the Select Board, was contacting Town Council about our standing, the town of Brentwood's standing on this issue.
I just have a problem, you'll read my letter, that the discussions of public hearings on the Pickpocket Dam started in twenty sixteen.
Yes.
The town of Exeter spent three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in engineering fees, not only to investigate removal of the dam, but many options to remediate the safety concerns. So I, the biggest peeve is that people are saying, well, we didn't get notice, well, you've been noticed, the public hearings noticed, started in twenty sixteen, and I saw that public noticed those meetings and went to those meetings.
People's memories are so short-term, and there's always so much transition on every committee and commission, there is a lack of continuity, and I've expressed this to you before, Bruce, at least as far as conservation, it gets lost in the shuffle, and there's no oversight that makes sure, what about this project? We talked about it at Conservation six months ago, who's following up on that, or we talked about it before elections, who's gonna follow up? There's just this lack of continuity in volunteer roles, as what is our intentions are.
What is people, people change, people change, but the whole, like, concept that this is something secretive is absolutely not secretive, because all of this information is.
All right, you guys can continue this later, we have a, just sit there laughing at me, manifest design. I, well, I would like to do a couple non-public things, if that's possible.
As long as they're legal, certainly is possible.
I have questions, I'm not sure I want to air.
I have, I have a list.
So you want to go into non-public?
Yes.
Do you know under which letters?
Because we have to say why we won't.
That is for the House of Representatives.
Not that, um, I'll, I'll send. I'll send you.
You could just say leave. Yeah, plot twenty-four.
Oh, have you heard from the rule-up people?
I haven't. You.
So, what? So do I make a motion to go?
I'm looking through my cheat sheet. Is there anything else you want to do in public before you do that?
Anybody have anything else, comments, questions?
Just a recap.
Since I'm the. I don't know, I just say, if you're.
That one.
Yes. That was voted, it was started the meeting. We voted in the same chair and vice chair.
Yeah, I just.
And we voted to appoint Mark as an alternate to the board.
Yeah. So how many voting members do you have? Ten, seven voting, and then how many else?
Up to five, but we have three halves.
Yeah. Here's to you by Jillian.
Yes.
So if you just click on, this one here was, see this? If you click on that, on the computer, this will come up. And it will also give you the date that we need to respond Saturday, that one that she stopped.
So basically just pick a letter or letters. Do you want to go in under? But first, before you do that, is there anything else you want to do in a public session?
No, I don't have anything else. Anything else for public session? Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion to. Go into non-public session to discuss, discuss an issue of litigation. And the vote has to be by roll call, so I guess first we need a second, and then we need a vote.
Second, then.
So.
I'll go in favor.
In favor.
I.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Should the alternates stay?
Yes.
So can we check these out?
Press the face button?
Oh.
That's not really a button.
I thought there was a button on.
Oh, the one that says power? There was, there wasn't anything new in email. I just don't know the.